All right, good evening. If I could ask everybody to take your seats. All right, so we apologize, we're running just a bit late. I apologize to you that we've kept you waiting a couple of minutes. We're in closed session right now. Procedurally, we're going to come back into open session and we're going to adjourn our workshop, and then we will begin after that, begin the seven o'clock meeting of the school board. Mr. Cole.
I make a motion to come out of closed session.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of coming out of closed session, back to open session, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero with open session. Mr. Cole.
Whereas the Powhatan County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Powhatan County School Board hereby certifies that through the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item on our agenda for the workshop is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn the workshop?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of adjourning our workshop of April 16th, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We are adjourned from our workshop. If you give us just a moment, we'll transition over and begin our formal meeting. All right, so I'll call and order this April 16th, 2019, meeting of the Powhatan County School Board. Ms. Wilson, if you'll let the minutes reflect that all members of the school board are present this evening, along with Dr. Jones, our superintendent, and Ms. Jordan Winnell, our student liaison. We'll begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and invocation. I would ask if Mrs. Emo would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and if Mr. Kunkka would lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we ask that you be with us on this day when we deliberate the business of Powhatan County Public Schools. Please guide us in our deliberations so we may make the best decisions in the interest of the students, the staff, the people, and citizens of Powhatan County. In your name we pray, amen.
All right, thank you. All right, so next item on the agenda is the approval of the draft agenda for the evening. Do any members have necessary changes to the agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of approving the draft agenda as presented, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item is the approval of our minutes. These are minutes from our meeting of March 12th, March 18th, and March 26th. Any discussion regarding the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the two meetings from March 12th, the meeting in March 18th, which was a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, and our workshop meeting on March 26th.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of approving Mr. Cole's motion, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda is review of bill and receipts for the month. Any discussion regarding the review of the bill and receipts? Our hearing nun takes us to our first public comment period of the evening. This is an opportunity for individuals wishing to address the school board to come forward and be heard. There's a time limit of three minutes per individual and five minutes per group, with a 30-minute total time limit. Would ask that speakers identify themselves by name. Please provide us with your address, and would ask that you direct your comments to the board as a whole, not to individual board members. Public comment period is open. Once again, public comment period is open. All right, seeing no movement, I'll bring public comment period to a close. Dr. Jones, I believe we have some recognitions this evening.
We do. If the school board could join me on the floor, we have several students and staff members that we'll be recognizing this evening.
Good evening. We do have a variety of recognitions this evening. We'd ask that everyone who is here for the recognitions to remain throughout the recognition period, and then there will be a break, at which time the board and the superintendent will go back to the stage, and if you want to leave at that point, you are certainly able to do so. We'd first like to recognize the Powhatan Middle School Athletics Girls Basketball Team. The 2018-19 Girls Basketball Team capped off an undefeated season by winning their second consecutive Southside Middle School Conference Championship. The Lady Indians trailed with nine seconds to go, stole an inbounds pass, and scored with five seconds left to defeat Russell Middle School 35 to 34. Congratulations to all the players and the coaches. I'd like the coaches to come forward now to be recognized. And now I'd like to recognize the members of the Girls Basketball Team. If you'd come forward as your name is called. Shawna Callahan. Caroline Camp. Catherine Cerulo. Adriana Flippin. Samantha Flippo. Bella Hoffman. Madeline Johnson. Erica Kraus. Corinne Lampman. Delaney Sanders. Olivia Snyder. Emma Terry. Nakia Turner. Pierce Vandell. And Colby Wright. Powhatan High School was the winner of the College Board's AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. Schools receiving the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award have either 50% or higher female representation in one of the two AP Computer Science courses, or a percentage of the female computer science examines meeting or exceeding that of the school's female population. Only 170 schools earned the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award for Computer Science, and that's nationally. Powhatan High School is only one of eight public schools in the Commonwealth of Virginia to be recognized for this award, and the only school in Region One to be recognized. This honor acknowledges the amazing work of Mrs. Blythe Samuels and Mrs. Sharon Shadrack, who are doing the things to engage more female students in computer science. By their leadership in this area, the PHS Computer Science Program is preparing our female students for the high-paying, in-demand jobs of the future, and is giving them the opportunity to help solve some of society's most challenging problems.
Powhatan County Public Schools Human Resources Department recently implemented a division-wide recognition award called the Helping Hands Award. The concept behind the Helping Hands Award is that anyone can nominate any Powhatan County Public School staff member who is inspiring, empowering, and innovating to receive recognition. Prior to spring break, Dr. Jones and other members of the district leadership team surprised four staff members during their workday to inform them that they were nominated and selected to be the first Helping Hand Award winners, and were given a poster of recognition to display in their classroom or work location, and a gift card donated by corporate sponsors. This evening, I have the pleasure of recognizing our first Helping Hands Award winners. When your name is called, please come forward to receive your reward. First, Ms. Libby Akempora was nominated by one of her colleagues, Ms. Sarah Cosner, for Portions of what Ms. Cosner wrote. "Libby goes above and beyond in her classroom by doing two-by-tens with struggling students, by making student-led mindful techniques part of her classroom routines, and by making it her purpose to know and help grow every single student. Libby is headed up our new R&amp;R room this year as an alternative to in-school suspension. As she sees the results of her students' work in R&amp;R, she has also inspired other staff members to grab hold of this new opportunity. She is an advocate and has inspired many to try this new intervention. Libby is also one of our PBIS co-facilitators. She has offered her PBIS testimony to staff in a way that has particularly encouraged and inspired other staff members to hop on board. Libby takes personal responsibility for creating a safe, supportive, inspiring atmosphere. She inspires us all to get up after we fall and to be the very best humans and leaders through even the smallest interactions we can be each day. I am incredibly inspired by Libby's loving spirit and everything she shares with the community. She is making a profound difference every single day. We are so very blessed to have her here with us. Libby, we notice and love you and thank you for your selfless and consistent inspiration. You are our rock." Next, Ms. Liz McCory was nominated by one of her students' parents, Ms. Tiffany Abundanza, for being inspiring. Ms. Abundanza wrote, "Mrs. McCory has had her students study the Seven Habits to Happy Kids while learning about the habits of being proactive. Mrs. McCory asked the children what a change was they want their parents were trying to teach them. My daughter offered that it was sleeping through the night without waking us up. Mrs. McCory encouraged Charlotte to set that as a goal, but to be proactive by working with mom and dad to identify a way to celebrate when she reached that goal. Fast forward two weeks, and our daughter started staying in her room and sleeping through the night for the first time in years. The change was astounding and inspired by her awesome teacher. Not only was our daughter very proud, mom and dad got to sleep through the night, too." Lieutenant Colonel Veronica Baker was nominated by one of her students' parents, Ms. Beth Belcher, for being empowering. Ms. Belcher wrote that Lieutenant Colonel Baker has inspired both and empowered her students all six years she has been at Powhatan High School. Through her leadership in required responsibility tasks she gives her students, Colonel Baker shows students that it will be like, what it will be like in the real world. Her goal has always been to give them the needed skills to help others, lead others, and push yourself to achieve your positive goals. Colonel Baker also incorporates outside sources to inspire her students. Through field trips and community service activities, the students get the opportunity to apply what they have learned in real-life situations. She expects excellence in her students and gives them the tools they need to reach it. I have had two students go through her program and through her help and dedication to see them succeed. They both have grown into individuals who are respectful, caring, and determined young men. And finally, Ms. Carol Antone was nominated by one of her colleagues, Ms. Libby Akempora, for being inspiring. Carol makes everyone who enters school counseling feel like they matter, that they are going to be heard and taken care of. When she speaks, you hear compassion and kindness. Students feel like everything is going to be okay. For staff, she can be a shoulder to cry on, a person who will politely answer questions, and a masterful problem solver, and a great friend. She will print off documents, forms, and even run to the closet to get salt-and-pepper packets for you. Carol is organized, professional, and caring to parents as well. Powhatan Middle School is blessed to have Carol Antone in our one tribe.
The VSBA Art Contest started in 1989 to promote the artistic talents of Virginia's public school students. For each of the nine VSBA regions, a winner is chosen for elementary, middle, and high school levels. The winning artist framed and displayed in the offices of the VSBA in Charlottesville, Virginia, and the Richmond offices of the State Superintendent of Public Instruction. The following Powhatan students participated in the art contest. At the elementary level, congratulations to Brandon Barr from Flat Rock Elementary School, second place overall, and this is his artwork. Representing the middle school level, Kayden Polka from Powhatan Middle School. And first place, Mandy Newcomb from Powhatan High School. The Future Chef Award Winners is a competition that has been started by Sodexo, who is our partner for school food services, and the first annual Future Chef Award Winners took place on March 15th at Powhatan Middle School. The following students participated, if you'll come forward to be recognized. Ava Duke from Flat Rock Elementary School took third place with her healthy Mexican Annie Crane from Powhatan Elementary took third place with Annie's Mexican Pizza. Madeline Myers from Pocahontas Elementary took third place with Tiny Taco Cups. Evelyn Hawkins from Pocahontas Elementary School was the third-place winner and the winner of the Best Chef's Hat with Evelyn's Fiesta Soup. Eva Crane from Powhatan Elementary School took second place with Eva's Mexican Shakshuka. And our winner who's here tonight is Abby Tinsley from Flat Rock Elementary School, first place with her organic Mexican lettuce wraps, and the school board was able to sample We have several winners for our Scholastic Art and Writing 2018 Awards. The following students won regional awards for their Art in Scholastic Art and Writing 2018 competition. We are members of the Southeast Region at Large, and that consists of all southeastern states. Taking a silver key in photography with an artwork titled Alone, Ethan Adams from Powhatan Taking a silver key in drawing and illustration with an artwork titled A Perfect World, 12th Taking honorable mention in photography for an artwork titled Tranquility is also Ashley? Yes? No? Yes? Riley Roberts, 12th grader, an honorable mention in ceramics and glass artwork titled Lunch. Joanna Thompson, a 12th grader, honorable mention in painting for artwork titled Bubbles. Zachary Atkinson, 10th grader, silver key in photography for an artwork titled Cheetos. An honorable mention in photography for artwork titled Squishy. And Mrs. Ward is standing, but also want to recognize our art teachers who are in the
All right, fantastic recognitions. Dr. Jones, the next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. So if you would want to walk us through the items, and we'll see if there's any discussion, we take them as a block.
Sure. On the consent agenda this evening, we have the principals' reports for the month of April, monthly financial report, the CIP financial report, our facilities update, which the board got more information on in our workshop, facility usage report, overnight field trips, donations, the personnel doc, and an addendum, and we're asking for approval of the consent agenda at this time. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, so is there discussion about any individual items on the consent agenda?
I have a few questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mrs. Emo.
For C and D, the CIP monthly report and the facilities update, I was wondering, in the train budget, I know we budgeted the $46,461, that's what we paid, but the other money, that's, we're paying them that, or that's just how much it's costing? I'm confused on that.
Mr. John, do you want to?
On the CIP report, the contract with Train is not the full $3,492,000. If you look down at the bottom-left of the contract amount, you'll see a contingency amount in there of $218,000. That is outside of the contract, so if we have additional things that we need to do a change order on or something, we may pay them that, but at this point in time, unless those contingency dollars are needed, we'd basically be paying them the $3.2 million, 70,000.
And that's what we, that was in the CIP last year for this year?
Correct. That was the bond projects that were passed by the county.
Okay.
That's the three-point, almost $5 million.
Okay, and the 46 is what we paid to have them do the study?
What we paid for the initial study.
Okay, got it.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, and then I had the facilities update. I saw the word compressor, and I just was wondering, that's not the same compressor that we had replaced a couple of years ago, right? How many? Is Dr. Tips, could you come up? Oh, that was the chiller. Okay, it was the C-word. Okay, I thought it was, okay. All right, so...
We don't mention that word here.
I'm sorry?
I'm joking.
I didn't hear.
I said, "We don't mention that word out loud, chiller."
Exactly, so that's why I, okay. All right, so that was that word. All right, so that was that word, or that question. And my other one is, when you put in there, burnish the floors in the terrazzo, what does, what does that mean?
Get them shining again. Put material down and then burnish them. It's a pad that goes on the bottom of a buffer machine, and they run it up and down the hallway to get them nice...
Like waxing?
Waxing.
Okay, that's the new word for waxing.
That, yes.
Okay. And then at Flat Rock, it said Eagle Fire Overflow Switch Replacement.
Correct.
What is that?
When we have inspections that are conducted by our outside vendor, they inspect our overflows, they inspect all of our fire sprinkle systems, and an overflow prevents, if there were to ever be a surge of water that comes into the building, an overflow protects it from going off in the building and causing the sprinklers to just totally drown the entire building. So, an overflow is a valve that's in there that when it receives additional pressure, it lets it come out of the piping instead of going through the building.
And it's called an Eagle Fire?
Eagle Fire is a company.
Oh, that's the company?
Correct.
Overflow.
Okay, overflow is the, okay.
Overflow is the actual piece, yes.
Thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? All right, Mr. Cole.
Comment on the donations? There was a sizable donation to... There's a sizable donation listed there for football. You know, I know we've expressed appreciation as an anonymous donor donation, but just wanted to comment on that.
Very generous.
All right, other questions or comments?
And I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion, we accept the consent agenda? Second?
All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero, the consent agenda. Superintendent, report?
Yes, sir. First item is, we're asking for considering approval of our food service operations contract renewal with Sedexo. This was presented to the board last month, and we need to initiate the next year in our contract with Sedexo at this time. Mr. Johns is here to answer any questions the board may have about the contract or the supporting documentation.
Welcome, Mr. Johns.
Yes, sir.
Questions for Dr. Jones or Mr. Johns regarding this item?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I had the question of the date for testings for, at the middle school, but I have learned through dinner that that's starting tomorrow, and Dr. Martin said she's going to announce that on the announcements tomorrow, so that all those students that wanted to taste food, when Mrs. Ayers and I were there, we wanted them to know that we listened, and now they get the opportunity, so, thank you.
All right. Other questions or comments? Mr. Cole.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Johns, can you clarify, there are two different fees listed in there, an administrative fee and a management fee. They are two separate fees of $51,000 of these, is that correct?
That is correct. And those are based upon the meal sold. And so, you'll see the flat, I mean, the dollar amount, but then you also see the cost per meal, because if, for example, their meal sold is more, then we're going to look at that per meal rate.
So, it could go up or down based on number of meals?
It could. Well, if it goes down, there is a flat dollar amount that they're guaranteed our loss of the year would not exceed that $10,000. And so, basically, what's going to happen if it does, at the end of the year, the last payment that we owe them for the month of June would be reduced by the amount that they did not make. And the contract that's proposed in front of you for next year has the same numbers, same guaranteed no loss as we are operating under this year, this contract. So, no changes in it.
All right, other questions? Can I just ask you, on slide number one, which is the attachment, it's percentage of students served, and I see if I'm reading it correctly, we're serving more, a greater percentage of students at a couple of our schools, three of them. In total, are we serving more students?
We are, and these charts, I presented these last month, but I did them through February. And looking at their numbers for March, March is up more than we were through February. So, Sedexo is going in the right direction for us.
Okay. All right, other questions or comments?
Comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cole.
The board has expressed some concerns over the course of the year about our performance at this point, and I think personally, I still have some concerns that we, but I am encouraged by the, by the changes and the improvements they've made over the last two, three months, and I'm hopeful that we're turning in the right direction. I think it's a great opportunity, and I'm still confident Sedexo can do it, but I think I'd be remiss not to say that I'm still, that it's remiss not to say that I am still concerned that we're not where we want to be, so...
And I would agree with those comments, and this is an annual renewal. I think that Sedexo, if I understand correctly, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. We bid this RFP out, and in the initial contract, we can renew this for up to a total of five years. This is the first year, so we do have three more renewals before we would then be required to go out and issue another RFP.
Well, I would echo Mr. Cole's comments. I think that Sedexo, it appears, listened to the feedback from the board a few months ago. I appreciate some of the things that I have seen them do, that I've read about in their reports, and some of the things like tastings and other things, and I would just certainly hope that they continue on that same path.
Thank you.
All right, other questions or comments?
I agree with the two of you gentlemen. I think we are getting there, and I'm glad to see that they're listening. That's important.
All right. Any further questions or comments?
Board members, people are saying they can't hear us, so I think we need to speak into our mics.
Testing.
It's just because the air conditioning is running, and they're having a hard time hearing us.
Okay. All right. We will strive to do better. Sorry about that. All right, so with that said, if there's no further questions or comments, do we have a motion? Assuming there are no further questions or comments.
I'll make a motion that we renew Sedexo's contract for another year.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
And I'll second it.
All right, motion is second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johns. I'll try to talk louder if that helps. All right, so, that may help a lot. All right. All right, Dr. Jones, next item is the School Board Association, with some policies needing to discuss.
Correct. This is a slate of policy updates, many of them just legal references and language clarification or corrections that were presented to the board last month, and we're asking for approval of these policies at this time. I'm happy to answer any questions. Dr. Parker is available as well to answer any questions that you may have about these policies.
All right, while Dr. Parker comes up. Dr. Maslow, can you hear us better at this point? Is this better? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right. So, we have several policies, and I know that there are some topics perhaps for a couple of these. What would be the easiest way?
Just to go down each person?
So, let's just start with, let's just go through them perhaps. So, questions or comments regarding any of the policies?
I have one, Mr. Chairman, or two, please. The BG and the GBD, they say that they're both the same, so I was just wondering why we have two and why we can't just have one.
Those are two different sections.
I mean, we can't put them together? Are they two different topics? Is that what you're?
They are. They fall under two different categories. Each of the sections are grouped by letters, so A are certain topics, and because it covers both areas, it needs to be in both places. That also, you'll see others throughout the updates that you receive today as well.
Okay. I was just wondering, because they both say Board Staff Communications. Okay, and my other question was the EFD, the Food Sanitation Program? I didn't see that one. Did anybody else not see that, or was my computer the lucky one?
CEH.
Yeah, I've got CEH.
I'll go back and look at that.
That's a good catch, Alan.
That is a good catch. You were comparing your two sheets. You did a good job.
Well, thank you, Ms. Ayers. Yes, I went down the list, and I said, "I got to get this done."
I just went through the policies, so I didn't compare, so I wouldn't have picked it up. Good job.
All right, so we'll remove the EFD from the list of what we take action about tonight.
Is it FD?
EF.
EFD.
All right, so, Ms. Emble, is that...
That's it, thank you.
Let's, let me make a suggestion. I think there are several of us that have questions or comments. Let's do this a little bit like board comments, if we can. Mr. Cole, are you prepared to discuss any you have questions or concerns about?
Just a comment, and that's on page 38. It's policy JHCA. My concern, and this is just one board member's concern, and it's not, it's, and I know it's contrary to what Virginia law is right now, but that section, or that policy is about physical examinations before students come to school. And, you know, it used to be Section E, now it's just another paragraph, and it's a physical examination that is not required of any child. His parent or guardian objects on religious grounds. And I'm just going to come out and publicly say that I have some problems with that component of this policy. I understand religious freedom, and I understand all those things, and I'm certainly a proponent of religious freedom, but I also am very concerned when my religious freedom might infringe on someone else's health, and that's all I'm going to say about that.
All right. Did you have any others, Mr. Cole?
I'm okay with the rest of them. I've read them over two or three times, and I think a couple of them I'd had a hard time basically figuring out, but it was my late at night brain and not the policy.
All right. All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Kunka, sir, do you have any, do you have questions or comments about?
No, not at this time. I don't have any questions or comments on these.
All right, Mrs. Ayers?
Yes, just one. Just a moment. It's A, it's AFA. Let me see what page it's on.
That's on page five.
Thank you.
I have the same note.
Well, do you want to take it? I think we have the same concerns.
I think we do have the same concern. I'll add to anything you may, you may comment on.
Okay, I think this is a policy that we have done, but we don't follow the policy as it's written now. So, I think as a board, we either need to decide to follow the policy as it's written or not adopt this policy. It's on evaluation of school board operational procedures.
And I would just add, I think, I believe it was two years ago, we conducted a self-evaluation as a board. We addressed what is in this policy. We have not done that since that time. I think we may, I think we've talked about it once or twice, but we have not done that. We've had discussion about when to do it, how to do it. We talked about what the self-evaluation instruments would look like, and I think Ms. Ayers and I just commented briefly to each other that if it is going to be the practice of the board, that we are not going to do it. This policy certainly seems to say that we would. It would be in our best interest, I think, or more appropriate to include May or to remove it as a policy. So, either say that the board may choose to do this, or that we're going to just remove it as a policy. So, that's a discussion item.
I don't know that you're...
There is a legal reference?
It's a legal reference. I think it's a requirement.
It's a state code for school boards.
All right.
And it is a state code to do it on a yearly basis.
So, if we're going to do it, we need to do it.
Yes.
So, I think we have done, I think we have done self-evaluations in terms of feedback to each other regarding performance and other things. This seems to contemplate, well, this does contemplate a much more formal process, so I would suggest then that in order to comply with our own policy, that we schedule a self-evaluation in the next few months.
Okay, my recommendation might be that we have scheduled a workshop and receive information maybe from VSBA, offering a good way to do that. I think that's what we did before. Ms. Wilson, did we not?
No, you did a self-evaluation.
We did a self-evaluation that we pulled from...
Right, from other...
Research, right.
Okay.
But I agree with you, I think checking with VSBA, and they should have a model evaluation that the school boards are following if this is in code, so we'll check with them and see what kind of documentation we can get, and get that to the board for their review.
Okay.
We have certainly provided feedback to each other. We've discussed these types of topics, but in order to comply with what this issue requires, they asked Dr. Jones to schedule a, and this is an item on an upcoming workshop for us.
Yep. There was an item tonight that we weren't able to get to in closed session, and I asked that that be moved to June. Could we not do both of those at the same time, or in conjunction with each other, or would that be too much?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Ayers, do you have any other topics?
No, that, that's fine, thank you.
All right. All right, so I have, I have just a couple. Page 13, it's policy ECAB, I believe, page 13, and I think it's just grammatical, but in the second paragraph, it says, "The school board may institute action and recover from the parents or either of them of any minor living with such parents, or either of them up to..." Perhaps it's just a little awkward when you read it, but is that copied from a VSBA policy, word for word? Is it copying the code of Virginia?
It could be.
It is a VSBA policy.
Okay. So, it's a model policy?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, so then go to page 31. Yeah, it is, but if it's, if their attorneys have reviewed it, that's, I'm okay with that.
I'll double check to make sure that we've...
Okay. When I read it, I read it a couple of times to make sure that I understood what it's suggesting we do, or what it's empowering us to do. So, go to page 31, and this is IGAI, and I just wanted to ask if, this talks about this character education curriculum. I've never seen that, and I would, I'd like to see what that curriculum looks like, if that would be possible.
Sure.
So, that's the only comment I have about that one. The next one I have is on page 40, and that's KBA. And I just wanted to know, so we were changing here the designation for, I believe, for FOIA, our FOIA officer, among other things, or is that...
This was an update for, it's, the, I guess, accepted language is no longer request for public information?
No, I'm sorry, it's KBAR.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize, I gave you the wrong one. KBAR, and it's on page 43. So, what I was going to ask was, that's the one that changes the designation from Ms. Wilson as our PIO to you, Dr. Parker, and it talks about the training that we're going to provide to you, and I just wanted to know what, where we're, how is that being provided to Dr. Parker for FOIA?
There's a FOIA...
I've attended a previous FOIA workshop downtown Richmond, and I've got, scheduled for another one this month.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's a complex section of the law.
Right.
I just want to make sure we're giving you what you need in order to be able to do that properly.
Yes.
All right, so, that's the only question I had, unless anybody else wanted to add anything. All right, last one I have is on page 47, and that is KGA, and I just had a question. The second paragraph, it talks about solicitations for contributions to charitable organizations, dues for FOIA organizations, et cetera, or for school organizations, may only be made outside school hours, individual discussions, et cetera. So, how are we handling this? So, how are we handling this with our students when they're, you know, soliciting donations, say, for some sort of a charitable project? I mean, we're not saying that a student can do.
If it's related to school fundraising, then there's a separate policy for that that we follow and guidelines.
Okay.
Only fundraising they should be doing during school is for school organizations. So, if it's an outside charitable organization.
Well, and that's what I'm asking. So, if it's -- and we have several of those that, you know, the run down the street or the walk down the street, the 24-hour walk. There's several things that raise money for charitable organizations around the county, around the state. So, this is, at least the way I looked at this, this seemed to suggest they could not do that during school hours. If that's right, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that I understood it.
I think the distinction would be if it's a school-sponsored activity. So, if it's a fun run that we're sponsoring, but the money is then going to a charitable organization, then that would be allowed under school fundraising.
And is that how we address the majority of those things?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, that's all that I have. Any other questions or comments about these? All right, so we're acting on these tonight, or the intention is for us to act on these tonight. So, we need to remove EFD from this group before we do anything, and then if there are any other motions regarding the items.
I make a motion we accept the policies except for EFD.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right, motion and a second to approve all of the listed policies this evening with the exception of EFD. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item.
Thank you. Last item that I have for you this evening is the to consider approval of the 2019-2020 Special Education Annual Plan slash the Part B flow-through application. This is a annual plan we have of how we will be spending funding that we receive mainly from federal funds as well as related services to children with disabilities. Dr. Prince is here to answer -- help me answer any questions that the board may have, but we're asking for approval of this. This plan has been presented to our local CAC committee and then received approval from that committee, which is one of the school board's advisory committees.
All right. Questions or comments? Dr. Prince, do you have anything to add? Good evening. All right.
If you don't mind, Dr. --
Yes, sir, please.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Prince, on page 13 of our PDF, and it's page eight of the plan, you've got a little summary there of 611 funds were used for special education employees' salaries and benefits, purchase materials and supplies, and so I guess that's a summary of everything that the money is being spent on, and then the detail is further down in there.
That's correct.
It totals about $850,000 if I remember right.
That's correct.
And so, some of this is spent, the vast majority of it's spent on salaries and benefits. There's a small, fairly small on materials, about 30-some thousand was spent on early childhood education, and then some money for evaluations. And the flow-through money, is that what it's called, set-aside money for speech services? That's for students that are not in our schools?
That's correct. So, we have planned with our private schools as well as with homeschool students.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on what it was about.
That's correct.
And I'll make my annual comment that it's a small pittance compared to what we spend in this division for special education services. And I'm fearful that this is one of the things on the cutting block for next year. So, it would be nice to know, Dr. Jones, what percentage of federal government money we actually got that offset our cost of what we spend for federal mandate, just so people are aware of that. I think it's a nice thing to remind our congresspeople in Washington of, you know, this is a law that we implement based on federal legislation, and we're getting probably, I would guess, less than 10% of what it cost us to implement the program.
Much less, yeah. We'll get that information to you.
All right, thank you. Other questions or comments? We managed to get you to the podium, Dr. Prince. Other questions or comments? All right, here and done. Do we have a motion regarding this item?
I make a motion we approve the 2019-2020 Special Education Annual Plan Part B flow-through application.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'm sorry, we have a motion.
You have a second.
I apologize. Motion and a second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right, before we leave, before we leave the superintendent's report, if there's no objection, if we could go back to item B for just a moment, and that's our policies that we just acted on. And I would just offer for clarification, we did discuss item AFA, and that's the policy, not to belabor this, but that's the policy that deals with self-evaluations. The legal reference in AFA is 22.178. 22.178 is the code section that authorizes us to establish policies or regulations regarding our actions. It doesn't seem to require a self-evaluation. So, I just offer that for the board. You're welcome to take a look at that on your own, 22.178, but it's simply a code section that authorizes or empowers school boards to adopt regulations regarding their activities. So, just for discussion purposes.
And that was the only cross-reference?
That's the only one that I see under AFA, unless I'm reading it incorrectly, since that was.
I'm not insinuating that, but I know that I've been to conferences that, you know.
And I'm not an attorney, but I just looked up 22.178.
Clarification from our board attorney.
And Ms. Ayers, we're of the same mind. That's exactly what I was gonna ask Dr. Jones. If it is a requirement, we certainly want to do that. It certainly is in our policies today. We want to act on it appropriately, but if you could check on that for us.
Do we want to postpone that one then, too, or remove it from tonight?
We've already voted on it, but.
Could we go back?
We can change it.
We can rescind the vote.
Or we can change. We can make a motion to change it.
Or we can make a motion simply to bring the policy up next time.
Okay, why don't we do that? Just let it stand, and then we'll.
So, since we've already acted on it, let's go ahead and stay -- unless there's a strong feeling otherwise, let's act on what we've done. We certainly want to comply with our own policies. We certainly have made efforts to do that. So, let's try to check on that for us and make sure that we're in a good place.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, discussion regarding that item before we step away? All right. And as a reminder, once again, I am not an attorney, but that's the way I read it, is it simply is the code section empowering us to make our own regulations. All right, so the next item on the agenda is, I believe it takes us to our discussions. So, comments by the board. Ms. Wendell, let's talk to you. Jordan Wendell, let's talk to you about that. What's your comments do you have for us this evening?
Everything, as usual, is going pretty well at school. I'm really enjoying how, as the year is winding down, the teachers aren't winding down, and they're keeping everything up for us to continue on through the end of the year. That's something that's really important to me, especially as all my AP tests are coming up. I want to keep up in my classes so that I'll be better able to succeed on this. Good.
The administration loved hearing your comments. That was fantastic. So, smiles all around in the audience as you were talking, so.
Yes.
All right, so how many weeks do you have left?
I'm not sure. I know there's like 30 school days left. That's not including like weekends and Memorial Day and all that fun stuff.
All right. Very good. Well, congratulations. You're very close.
Thank you.
Mr. Kunkka.
Nothing other than the spring is an exciting time, seeing the world come back to life. And with that, and being in election year, I've begun the process personally for gathering signatures, meeting the people in my district. And if they'll have me for another four years, I'll officially run again this November. That's all I have.
Mrs. Ayers?
I just wanted to say that I attended the Mackey Walker Governor's School Robotics Legislative Night, and it was absolutely fascinating. I mean, these, the students are just so brilliant, and they do such a good job at what they do. And they kept saying, "Try to use the controls." And I'm like, "Oh, no. I don't want to do that. I've never played video games, and I don't want to..." Well, I did it, and they took good care of me. They were like, "No, no, the other one. No, no, the other one." But it was a really, really great night, and I wish it had been better attended by the people they invited. There were only a few people that did attend, but it was really a great night, and I learned a lot. And the other thing that I just want to say is that I will unfortunately not be attending the May meeting because, which is rare. I think I haven't missed too many meetings in my time on school board. But my sister is an actress, and she's been nominated for an award for Best Actress in a Play. So, without my parents being here anymore, I feel that I need to go and support her in that. So, I will see everyone in June.
Very good. Mrs. Emel?
Okay, well, I want to say I really liked the Helping Hands Awards. I didn't hear if, who thought of that, or is it one?
Came out of the Human Resources Department.
Okay, well, I really like that. That's a really nice idea. And I'm very proud. All the awards were great. But I'm also very proud of the high school for that College Board AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. Because, you know, there's a lot of studies, and some people send their children, their girls, to an all-girls school just to, because they want them to excel in that area. So, it's really nice that we have that at our high school for all our ladies. I attended kindergarten registration at all three of our elementary schools last week. That's always a fun day to see. A lot of the parents are nervous, but the kids are all excited. Did we get a final number on that?
I'll have those numbers for you on Friday.
Oh, okay. And then, oh, I've got my little celebration of the horse is coming up, May 4th, at the Rocky Oak Farm, starting at 9:00 a.m. And they gave me some of these, so if we need any, you know, in the school board office or at any schools, please grab one. And then, the last thing I heard, one of our high school graduates from last year has landed a job as a production assistant for the show Dance Moms. So, I was very excited for her. So, I thought I'd share that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Emel. Mr. Cole, sir?
Just a couple of comments and commendations, really. I'm reading the principals' reports at the elementary schools. I'm really happy to see them collaborating with each other on events and workshops and contests. I think that's a great thing. The book that you picked out, Fenway and Hattie, seems to have been a hit, and what you do to encourage reading and all the activities you do associated with that are great, and thank you for doing that. And I'm not sure, I can't remember which school did it that had the prize, as a door prize being to ride in a police car or a fire truck. That's pretty cool. Mr. Solz, did you do that? I think some of the school board members would like to participate in that contest next time. The other thing is that I just want to make a general comment to all the events that our schools are hosting, in-school events, out-of-school events. I know that it's a lot of work. I'm guessing, Dr. Massa, that you've had something almost every weekend since Christmas. But this last, you know, you've had chorus, you've had band, you've had drum line. This past weekend, you had the Future Problem Solvers there. You know, and we strive to be a community school and host community events, and I don't know that we could do much better than what we're doing right now. So, I just want to say thank you to all the people that make that possible, the people that run the events, the administrators in those buildings, the support staff, you know. It couldn't happen without a lot of people doing a lot of hard work, and thank you for doing that.
All right, thank you, sir. So, I'll be brief. I just wanted to publicly thank Mrs. Emel. On Saturday, I had a scheduling conflict with one of my sons. I could not get to the Future Problem Solvers event. I was over in Chesterfield. She was already on her way. She was very gracious and stepped in and filled in for whatever duties I would have performed that day. And I truly appreciate you doing that. It was very kind of you, and I appreciate your engagement and commitment. So, thank you.
Well, that's nice of you, Mr. Chairman, but I was only calling you to let you know that I was running late, so you could tell them. So, I was tardy. And then, the only person that was there, thank goodness, was Mr. Cole, was.
I'm convinced Ms. Emel was late on purpose, because she knew the names that I was gonna have to read.
Well, and I had a scheduling conflict that I could not get back, and that was completely my fault, and I apologize for that. But I appreciate you stepping in to do that. I did not realize, Mr. Cole, you played a part in that.
Yeah.
But to all of those involved in representing the board that day, I appreciate whoever had a hand in that. Thank you very much. It was great that you did that, and we want to support events like that. And I'm very sorry that I could not get there, but I appreciate you doing it. So, to both of you, I extend my appreciation.
Thank you. And also, our staff, Dr. Amahandro, Dr. Thomas, oh, and Dr. Massa. Is that everybody? I mean, they handled it so well, you know, as to how we were gonna redo it. So, I appreciate that. So, thank you for filling in all of you.
All right, and the only other comment I would offer is simply that we're getting near the end of the school year. So, another hopefully very successful year for us as we wrap things up, and that's the only comment I would offer through the evening. Dr. Jones?
Just to echo what you have to say, we're entering the crazy season, and I know everybody's refocused after a nice spring break and ready to finish out strong, and we're gonna make sure that our students are successful through the end of June or through the middle of June when we end, and look forward to doing that and wrapping up another very successful year.
All right, well, thank you, sir. All right, that takes us to our second public comment period of the meeting. This is an opportunity for individuals or delegations wishing to address the board to be heard. There is a one-minute time limit per individual and three minutes per group with a total time limit of 15 minutes. We would ask that individuals wishing to address the board, please come forward, identify yourself by name, please provide us with your address. And if you would address your comments to the board as a whole, not to individual board members. Public comment period is open. Once again, public comment period is open. All right, seeing no movement, I'll bring public comment period to a close, and that would take us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion we adjourn.
Have a motion and a second. Motion and a second. All in favor of adjournment, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Have a great evening, folks. Thank you, staff.